So, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole to Order. Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
So, do we have any additions to the agenda? No, seeing none. We're going to have staff report first from the Economic Development Activities Report, and then we'll have the Fire Department. Brian will give us a presentation also.
Brandon Boyes, Economic Development Manager. I'll just go over some quick highlights in the report. We've had a lot of new activity in our downtown. Strawberry Fields renovations were completed, and they held their grand reopening on July 9th. The store is under new ownership, and it's been fully remodeled, so please check it out. Sherwin-Williams has announced that it will be relocating from its current location at 1504 North Cunningham Avenue and moving to 203 North Vine Street. That's the former Corkscrew property. The plan of the new owner is to invest nearly half a million in renovation of that property to prepare for its new tenant. In addition, on 400 North Broadway in downtown, MedServe Equipment relocated from Champagne. They are a durable medical equipment supplier. A couple tenants also that announced they're moving to downtown Urbana, the Capoeira Angola Center plans to locate up above Mirabelle at 122 West Main Street, and Matthew Farrell Creative, a small graphic design business startup, will, actually already has located in CoLab at 206 West Main Street. In addition, should have been up at the top of the list, Lacy's Barbecue had their grand opening and ribbon cutting on June, well, the ribbon cutting was on June 24th. They'd had their grand opening a few days before that, and that has been very popular. A lot of people have been checking out Lacy's. It's a great addition to our downtown. On University Avenue, the Gateway Shops, the final build-out is occurring for some of those tenants. There are several going in. A gaming hall, that's Lacy's Place, wireless mic store, and also karaoke lounge. So, there will be one additional tenant to go into that new commercial development on University Avenue. Unfortunately, out on Philo Road, Cafe Zozo announced that they would close. They have closed, or will close soon, rather. And up on Cunningham, we've received plans for an additional two-unit, 20-unit apartment building at Eastland Apartments. That's at 1905 North Cunningham. For the Public Arts Program, the call for entries for murals on glass received 36 applications, so good strong number of artists submitted on that. The jury met and selected two pieces for display at the Urbana Business Association office and at the Civic Center. Those pieces are Oral's Morning by Phil Strong and Slat Painting by Nathan Westerman. In addition, our Public Arts Coordinator, Pauline Tanos, is working on establishing a new event, a new annual event called the Urbana Art Expo. This will take place at the Civic Center for the first time on September 13th. The deadline for application materials will be August 7th, so that's the call for artists to participate in the expo. Downtown Urbana held its first food truck rally last month, and it was a smashing success. Nearly all the food trucks completely sold out of food. I think we had seven participating. Natalie Kenny Marquez, our Marketing Coordinator and the Director of Urbana's Market at the Square, put a lot of effort into organizing this event. The next will be July 28th, and then there'll be another one in August. So, there'll be more food trucks this time with more food, so don't be discouraged. Should be a great event. It was quite the festival atmosphere in downtown Urbana for, you know, for a weekday lunch hour. Natalie, our Market Director, also continues to do on-air live cooking performances with, as part of the farm-fresh and fast-cooking segments she does on WCI News. That's CI Living program in the afternoons, and you can view those online as well. News for the Economic Development Division. We have promoted our Economic Development Associate, Miles Thomas, to the position of Economic Development Specialist full-time, and we are also going to hire a second full-time Economic Development Specialist. Libby Horwitz will be relocating from the Philadelphia area in August. The Urbana Business Association Executive Director, Cynthia Chandler, has announced that she will move on to a new position at the end of July. We really appreciate the time and effort that Cynthia has given to the organization and all the good things she's done for downtown Urbana. A couple highlights in the UBA report. UBA did achieve, under Cynthia's leadership, the $28,000 threshold in cash membership dues. That was the goal that was set out in their operating contract with the City of Urbana, so they will receive the full amount from the city this year. The Uncork Urbana Wine Festival, in its second year, was, which was also an event established by Cynthia Chandler in large part, was a very good success. It was 2,200 people, doubling last year's attendance, and that's in despite of two downpours of rain. And it was very surprising to be out there that day to see the downpours come and nobody really leave. And the lines really only got longer than after the rain came. Lastly, the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival will take place on August 28th and 29th this year. Berlin and the Psychedelic Furs will headline. The UBA Board will appoint a interim director soon to ensure that event goes off without a hitch. Any questions for the ED report?
Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. Brian, there he is.
Okay, I left at each of your seats a letter from Congressman Rodney Davis. We were contacted last week and told that we were the recipients of a 2014 Assistance to Firefighters grant, and on the back of the letter is a webpage from Bullex describing a digital fire simulator, and this is what we requested the funds for. Our grant's an amount of $20,645. This grant's a 10% matching grant, and so in our training budget, we've got $2,064 to do our funding match, but I just want to make you aware tonight that we did receive the grant, and there'll be a budget amendment forthcoming at the committee meeting on August 27th. But this is our fourth Assistance to Firefighters grant in a row that we've gotten. Division Chief Chad Hench does a great job writing these grants for us, and it's a very competitive grant, but he's always very good at making them aware of the Fire Department's needs and that we have a definite need for these type of training devices or tools. And then we also have to show the city's financial needs, and he's very good at putting that together, and he's been very successful. So, if you want to look at the back, this simulator is, we got to play with one of these simulators at the Firefighters Instructors Conference in Indianapolis this year, and it's kind of a nice training tool. We can, we can go into a building like Florida Avenue, Residence Hall, or Hendrick's House, where we usually train for our high-rise training, and we can simulate a fire like you see on the picture on this first page. And it's real looking fire conditions. We simulate the smoke, the fire. In a building where we can't use water, one of the devices that comes with this digital fire simulator is a hose nozzle that's exactly like the nozzles we carry, except it uses a laser on the fire screen to simulate putting water on the fire. Last year, we purchased a smoke machine that's from the same company that works through Wi-Fi with this digital simulator, and as you apply your water or your digital, your laser device to the fire, it'll simulate the smoke. Obviously, if you hit a fire with water, you're going to create steam, and the smoke machine actually reacts in that way. So, it's a really good tool. It gives as lifelike a conditions for our firefighters to train in as we can in somebody's structure that, you know, they really don't want us to damage. They don't want real smoke, and they don't want real fire or water in their structure, so it's about as real as it gets. And so, we're excited about this, and so you'll be seeing the budget amendment coming here at the next committee meeting. Is there any questions about this?
No, but thank you. Appreciate it. Tell Chad, good job. All right, next we have public input. Well, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Diane.
I move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Diane, second by Dennis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next is public input. Anyone who would like to address the council? I do have a couple of slips here. So, Peter, you're going to wait till the time? All right. Wade's going to wait, and I have from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Underwood that they were, do not wish to speak, but they are, we are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. So, anyone else would like to address the council? Committee of the Whole. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution Number 2015-07-031R. A resolution approving a supportive housing program sub-recipient agreement with Courage Connection, formerly the Center for Women in Transition, FY 2015-16, Community Development.
Good evening. Before you is a resolution approving a sub-recipient agreement with Courage Connection, formerly the Center for Women in Transition for fiscal year 1516. The city has administered this grant on behalf of one or more agencies over the past 20 years. In October of last year, the city submitted a renewal application to HUD through the Champagne County Continuum of Care. In January of 2015, the city received notice from HUD that the application was approved, and in May of this year, the city received the grant agreement. The city then is required to execute an agreement with the sub-recipient agency per HUD regulations. So, that's what this is, and both staff and the Community Development Commission recommend that the resolution be approved, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions from council? Seeing none, oh, Dennis.
I just thought that I would move approval because I think this is a good program.
So, it's been moved by Dennis, second by Charlie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
So, ordinance numbers six and seven, I don't have information to fill in here on my agenda. Says an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with...
Blank.
Blank. I guess Brandon's going to fill in those blanks for us?
Actually, we won't be filling in the blanks until the agenda for the city council meeting.
Okay, so then we will be moving these, we would, I guess we would, I would entertain a motion to send these to council without approval? How will we do that?
That would be acceptable.
With no recommendation?
Thank you.
Brother Madigan? Yes, sir.
If you're going to move them together, you'll need an omnibus motion to do so.
So, I'll do them, no, I'm not going to do that. All right, so, but I need a motion.
So, I move that we consider these ordinances in omnibus fashion.
No, we have to get a staff report. This, we have a whole presentation on this, right?
If you'd like.
Oh, sure.
We would prefer a presentation.
So, tonight, council's being asked to consider two ordinances. One, which would approve a redevelopment agreement concerning the redevelopment at 401 North Broadway Avenue in downtown Urbana, and an accompanying budget amendment ordinance that would revise the annual budget to provide funds pursuant to that agreement. The development proposal was presented to community development staff by Matthew Cho of Cake Design Development LLC, who is here tonight and can answer your questions after my overview of the proposal. The proposed redevelopment, again, is 401 North Broadway Avenue, which is the former Four Seasons Garage Sale Building. This location is on North Broadway Avenue, north of the Station Theater and south of the eastern entrance to our new Boneyard Creek Improvement Area. The proposed redevelopment would renovate the space and transform it into an indoor market dubbed Broadway Market, and the intention would be to complement the city's investment and interface with our new Boneyard Creek Improvement Area. Cake Design would act as the developer. However, a group of investors who have a purchase agreement for the property will be the entity that we enter into this agreement with. The proposed redevelopment is $1.2 million. The total incentive that the agreement would provide for if all terms are met is $345,000 in the form of redevelopment loan. Some specific uses described for Broadway Market include establishment of a shared commercial kitchen, interior seating, outdoor seating, full commercial activity, or activation of the building with multiple tenants, and would also include demolition of the eastern portion of the building to allow for parking. If fully activated, the redevelopment would employ up to 30 full-time employees and 20 part-time employees. Annual gross sales are optimally projected by the developer at $2 million, and ideally the project, if adheres to schedule, would be open before the start of summer in 2016. This property was originally, was most recently purchased, or purchase agreement was entered into by Green Thumb LLC, who you may recall David Brodsky, who was a member of that LLC, presented to this group at the time that they were preparing their application to the state of Illinois for a medical cannabis dispensary license. That group did not receive a medical cannabis dispensary license. There are no other opportunities for licenses, hence their intended use and entering into that purchase agreement is not an option at this point. The group then, in looking for alternative users, was partnered with Cake Design. Cake Design then developed the Broadway Market concept. The reason that the LLC is still not yet determined is because a subgroup of the original investors will be the people who come together to create the new LLC. So, they were still working out some of the details of that at the time the council packet was due, but they're well aware that we need that information in time for next week's council meeting. However, you know, the structure of the deal will, is unlikely to change. Some specifics about the property is, something staff have observed, is that adaptive reuse of the existing building is most likely the highest and best use for the property. New construction at this site would be cost prohibitive on account of the fact that it's very proximate to the Boneyard Creek, and also the property sits on top of a sanitary sewer line, which may require vaulting or other preventative investment to protect that public infrastructure. The site is also severely limited with regard to parking. In fact, I believe most of the parking on the site is non-conforming. The concept of moving or demoing out that eastern part of the building to provide for parking was actually first explored by Green Thumb, so that concept was explored before. What was discovered, though, when the Broadway Market concept was pursued further, was that all the utility hookups are at this portion of the building as well. So, it's going to be an additional cost then to relocate all those utility hookups in order to create that needed onsite parking for what will hopefully be a very dynamic use of this space. Staff recognized that there are extraordinary costs associated with this proposal to redevelop the site. Subsequently, we offered a site preparation cost reimbursement at a rate of 90%, up to a maximum of $135,000, with then the remainder of the project, which would be the renovation of the remaining, remaining building, to be a more traditional 20% reimbursement, up to a maximum of $210,000. So, that brings the total city investment in the project up to $435,000, and the estimated total private investment, including building purchase, tenant finishes, and equipment, is $1.8 million. The proposal is highly responsive to the goals of our downtown plan and to the TIF District redevelopment plan. The project would activate a building that has seen better years. It would provide opportunity for multiple tenants and startup businesses, a diversity of businesses, which is something that we've appreciated about Mr. Cho's other projects in our downtown, that it's allowed multiple startups to realize new business activities in our downtown. And the site is also intended, and the design is also intended, to complement our nearly $9 million investment in the Boneyard Creek Improvement Area. This rendering actually shows the, a proposed facade improvement from Race Street overlooking the pedestrian bridge, and the intent would be to have outdoor seating at the western edge of the building to actually entice folks to park even over on Race Street and to access the property by, by our Boneyard Creek Improvement Area. The project is anticipated to increase the property value by approximately $140,000. That's the EAV, rather. This would generate about $90,000 in incremental tax revenue before the end of the life of TIF II, which is in 2022. During that same time, a more modest estimate of what local sales tax would be, would be about $240,000. That's for city and school district and county, so the city portion of that would be roughly $110,000, again, over the same period of time through the end of life of TIF II. So, the local taxing partners would collectively recoup an equivalent amount of property tax and sales tax revenue within about six years of project completion. However, the TIF itself would not recoup its investment. However, the intent of the TIF would be met by activating the building that frankly we feel is unlikely that we'll see a similar development or redevelopment proposal of this nature for this particular property. The TIF's fund balance for 1516 is expected to be at least $1.3 million, so there is sufficient funding in the TIF to fund this proposed development agreement. Staff is recommending approval of both the redevelopment agreement and the attached budget amendment ordinance. We will provide the LLC name before the next council meeting. Do you have any questions for me? And also Matt Cho is here to answer your questions.
Diane.
I understand that LLC name is to be determined, but who actually is responsible for seeing that this project gets completed?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm remembering our, another redevelopment agreement that was supposed to deliver a budget and a timeline, and we really didn't get that. So, how, who's going to be ensuring that we actually get the components of the development agreement that we're asking for?
The, the development agreement has to be with the property owner. Okay? So, in this case, the new LLC will become the property owner. They will be ultimately responsible. That formation of the LLC, the parties of, the members of that LLC will be responsible. However, in this case, they're going to be contracting to a developer, Cake Design Development, to perform the actual work of it. So, on a day-to-day basis, it would be Cake Design Development, but ultimately, per the terms of the agreement, the owner of the property.
But on the ground, it's Cake Design?
Yeah.
And they'll have a contractor and an architect and, and all those professionals?
I would defer to Mr. Cho to answer those questions, but I would point out that the agreement doesn't require the property owner to, you know, work with anyone in particular. The city's agreement and the ultimate responsibility is upon the property owner. That property owner has entered into obligations at their own leisure for who will actually conduct the work that they're obligated to under the agreement.
And the public dollars go into the infrastructure?
It's on a reimbursement basis, only for eligible expenses that we can demonstrate that the money was actually paid for, for those eligible expenses.
And the eligible expenses examples are, which are?
Primarily infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, any, pretty much anything that is directly involved with site preparation or the physical building itself, and is not to include any capital equipment that could be taken from the property, you know, at the end of a leasehold.
Dennis?
Well, of course, this looks like a really good project, ideal actually, considering the location and, and the previous uses of the building. Are any of the LLC property owners here tonight?
No, I don't believe so.
Why would they not be? I mean, there, are these local people?
Mm-hmm. I think, actually, at least one is, but what's important here, I think, is that those property owners who came together to purchase the property did so with the intent of a very different project. When they considered alternatives, they reached out to Cake Design Development, and Cake came up, Matt Cho came up with the concept that you're reviewing tonight. So, this has largely been the work of the developer who would be contracted to perform.
So, I think it's a great development, but if we're making our agreement and are spending our money, not with Mr. Cho, he's merely an employee apparently, but with the develop, with the property owners, why would they not be here to represent and answer questions? We don't know who they are, and they don't even have a name. So, why would we want to be, I guess I'm sort of wondering, why would you want to devote, you know, a considerable amount of money with people that we don't have, we don't have a record, a track record with yet, and we don't know who they are, and they're not here? So, how can we really go forward? I mean, we're going to do it on faith, I assume. Is that what we're going to do?
Eric?
No. I, as I understood, what I heard is that we're not being asked to approve this until we know the developers and, and meet them, and that'll be next week, that we're being asked to forward this to council with, at this point, with no recommendation until, until the, until those names are forthcoming, and that it's purely a technical matter that we don't know them now, that there are arrangements that are still yet to be made.
But I think that, you know, we've had just even recent, more recently, tonight, an instance when we had questions about the development, and we asked that this come back to committee of the whole for more information before we start sending things to city council. It just seems like it would be an inappropriate way of handling it.
Libby?
I just wanted to point out that we do often have local agents, particularly when applicants are from out of the area, and I did check with Mr. Cho, and he is their local agent, so therefore he's authorized to speak for the group and to be that liaison. In fact, that would be part of his role because, because he's local, that he can, he can provide that, and you will also often find in zoning cases that ownership might be out of the area, so they rely upon local professionals to be their agents. I just thought I'd point that out. that out.
But we're making a loan. We're not approving a zoning engine. We're, we're actually spending significant, significant amounts of money, the city money.
Yeah, but we're spending significant amounts of money as reimbursements on infrastructure to the building, which we've done several other very similar developments with, with Mr. Cho in particular. So I don't see what makes it any difference whether, you know, in this case, he has, he's working for a group of investors who have, have shown faith in him, and, and based on his, his past performance on these other buildings. So I see, I see absolutely nothing wrong with, with not knowing the names of these individuals. We've met some of them already, and because they, they've been to town, you know, a couple have come to town before, and one of them is a local faculty member, if, if he's part of this group.
Well, if I can respond, then that's great. I mean, I certainly believe in Mr. Cho as a developer, but in these other instances, he actually owned the buildings. And in this one, somebody else, some, a new entity is going to own the building, and we're, we're making a, an agreement with an entity we don't, haven't met yet, really, formally. And I just sort of wonder how we can go ahead?
Well, let me, so let's make sure we're clear. It's, it's, the motion, it sounds like the motion would be that we would move this to council with no recommendation, and that a recommendation or that approval at the council is going to be contingent upon the actual LLCs being present. But I do agree with you that they must be here in order for me to vote yes for, for that. So I do think it's important for us to have that conversation, but at this point, it's being... Well, I don't think it's bizarre for us to enter, to want to actually have the individuals who we're going to give public dollars to, to be present. I respect Mr. Cho. He has done tremendous work in the community, but he will not ultimately be responsible for anything that goes wrong with that situation. The people who will actually, who own the building will be responsible for that. And so I think it's just good business for them to be present when we enter into an agreement with them. That's my position. But at this point, we're just simply asking for it to go to council with no recommendation. So if we can entertain a motion, I would do so.
Well, I just didn't...
It's not that they didn't want to be here. One of the local entities with the Danville and everything upstairs, the two channels.
Come on up.
He's actually in Miami, and he asked if he should attend, but I said it might be okay, and I can represent. But if you do need to meet him, I would recommend that. Yeah, he can come to the next meeting. The other partner is in Chicago, so we can see if he will be able to attend. But I know definitely one of the partners of Green Thumb will be here next week. I would also comment that, I don't know how traditional redevelopment agreements work, but I think in the future, per the, the developments that I've done, I think any future development that I will do will require outside investment, knowing that a lot of my resources are tied up into Main Street. So I would kind of become more familiar with this kind of process.
So Diane, and then Mayor, and I think we'll go from there.
I had a question about trains. Is that okay to ask at this point? I, I, it's an exciting concept, but one of your conceptual drawings showing, showed people walking back and forth across the train track, and it's, it's kind of an unusual situation in that trains do run on that track, but very infrequently. So I assume part of your planning will, will take the fact that there could be a train where this person is. So, so how will, how, I, I guess, you don't have to answer it tonight, but I'm just curious how the safety of the patrons is going to be handled in this situation.
That's something we'll probably have to also investigate with DART, who I know that they run a train once a month throughout the space.
I think it's once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah. And I'm not sure what time, but, but there could be people on that track when that train comes through, so.
Right. And I think what we're trying to investigate is how far out our easement or our property line goes in order to keep that, that south-facing entrance, which is so important to the space. And if there is some sort of, I guess, hazard, we would probably have to put rails up. I think one good example is what's happening on Race Street is where they paved over the sidewalk part of it and the roadside. So it is more accessible. Right now, there is apparently just a lot of rocks, so it is not even pedestrian-friendly and doesn't meet up with the existing sidewalk currently. And that was something that we would probably either invest in just because it's good for our customers walking too.
Well, I guess I'd encourage you, as you go further into design, obviously, these are just conceptual, but actually provide for a safe crossing of the railroad track because of the, and also, you know, there's going to be between the station theater and the market and...
I should note, and I'll look at Bill Gray while I say this, but it, it is not a simple task to make any improvement to the railroad right-of-way. They need to be very much involved, and it often comes at a larger expense than one might prefer. So while we certainly encourage Matt to look into that, we may not be able to require him to do it in any way, given that it, it would concern the railroad's property.
However, that presentation that I believe a student...
Matt, could you please speak into the microphone, sweetie?
That presentation that the, that a student gave, I guess, a couple months ago about reusing the rail, I think that's something that, whether that happens five years, ten years, is something that I would advocate for strongly. And hopefully, we can get a lot of stakeholders, community stakeholders, behind that type of project to connect the other hubs of downtown and Champaign-Urbana.
Okay, but in the short term, if there's a train on that track, we, we need to be aware of it and do whatever we can to provide for the safety of the people in the area.
I don't know who was next. Was it Dennis or the mayor?
LLC has to file with the state, right?
Right.
So where are they in that filing?
They are currently working on the operating agreement. Right now, they have to negotiate with the current Green Thumb owners and resolve them of their responsibilities with the property. And so I think they're trying to make that as fair as possible. But once they get an operating agreement, they can then file for their complete ownership of the transfer from Green Thumb to this new existing...
So how, how long would that take?
I think they, they would be able to secure an option or purchase agreement onto the property in conjunction with the LLC. So I know, we've been talking about this for about two weeks now, and they've started negotiations two weeks ago, and they think they're coming to a firmer terms of their operating agreement. So I think, knowing that Charo's in Miami, I think we've been discussing via text, and I've definitely notified him that he needs it by Thursday, 10:00 AM, so.
So they can get it approved by the state by, by our next meeting?
They can formally file.
And that's all that's needed, is to file?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Some other things that are built into the agreement is that it is a condition precedent of this agreement going into effect, that the LLC that we're entering into the agreement with holds title fee simple for this property, which means as long as we know what the LLC is and it doesn't change, some of those other details can get sorted out after the fact because the condition will not take effect unless that LLC owns the property.
Eric?
So I just wanted to say that I think we ought to be really, really nice to these investors in case they might want to follow this up by buying a hotel.
Dennis? Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, you know, I think, I mean, we, we have to secure the best possible use for this building, and I think that we're seeing a great proposal. But on the other hand, you know, we have to secure the safety of the public's, public coin, and it's just so bizarre to be working with a company based that we haven't met yet. They, they haven't taken the time to come down to, to be here, and they haven't even achieved their LLC status yet. So, I mean, there's, there's so many things. What I'm wondering is if this project might be presented maybe a month too soon. I mean, and, and I'm just wondering, Matt, if there is some kind of timeline that you're anxious to be achieving in doing this, or, I mean, can you, can you pace yourself a little more, more cautiously so that some of these elements can come? Because I know that for other developments that we're doing with the city, we've had people come from Indiana to make presentations numerous times, you know, for their projects, and it didn't seem to offend them that they had to do that. So I just, just speaking for the public good and public transparency of what we're about to do, I just kind of think it's honorable.
Right. And, and I think the other three agreements were a little bit different since I did own the properties beforehand. I think what we're, we're trying to do here is, is, is get Green Thumb to transfer it over pretty much at cost, and I think that's what the negotiations have been. But what we've done is we've, we've had negotiations with the bank two months prior, and I think everything about this project has led up to this, where they're essentially waiting for the commitment from the city or an actual member from the city to understand the whole project. And I think that's where possibly delaying it would, would push the financing also. It's almost like kicking something and then kicks something else further down.
So now this is starting to feel like the proposal that we had for the Baptist Church on Race Street, where success was sort of contingent upon the city's agreement. Is that sort of where we are?
In a way. And but the, the preliminary numbers that we've presented to the bank make them very comfortable with this proposal that we've gotten so far. And I think once, before we've asked for, the banks have asked for letters of intent or et cetera, but I think this bank is ready to lend per an approval of the TIF agreement, knowing that that money has been allocated.
Okay, well then, okay, that, you're helping to explain the situation in a way that I think makes it a little more compatible.
Okay. Any further?
Diane?
I still have a question, so we need to... Okay. So, and, and I can save some of the other stuff for the next meeting, but I was just curious, is there a precedent for this ninety percent reimbursement rate for infrastructure? Is this something the city has done in previous agreements?
We did something similar with 204 West Main, and that was pertaining to the fact that that was a dangerous building that was not suitable to be repaired. We provided a, actually, I believe it was a hundred percent for a certain portion of that project that pertained exclusively to the demolition of the existing site. We recognized that that portion, that was the obstacle to development in that case. Something, that property was in, in TIF I, which has a very near-term life, but TIF II, even though it is a few more years out, it really doesn't have a lot of time left in terms of the amount of time that we have to incentivize and reactivate these buildings. So we are motivated to use this TIF as a tool to, to catalyze these projects, and removing those extraordinary costs is one of the best ways we believe we can do them.
And so this ninety percent reimbursement rate, Matt, you would consider that essential to the deal?
Yeah. Per, per where the utilities are located at this point, they're pretty much in that, that building that we're trying to demo. And then if we centralize everything, we get efficiencies from locating a core. So that way, as long as we move the utilities...
Okay, I'm sorry. I understand, I understand what you're trying to do here. I get that. But you're saying that it has to be reimbursed at a ninety percent rate, or the numbers don't work?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that's where the bank is more comfortable with, knowing that there's significant upfront incentive to get the building to this higher and best use.
Okay.
Currently, and, and I would invite any of the council, if they, they want to go through the building and take a look at it, I'm, I'm open to scheduling walkthroughs just to see the condition of the building, but...
Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm supportive of you doing something with the building. It's an eyesore, and it's in a great location to be redeveloped. But I just, that, that ninety percent reimbursement rate just kind of jumps out at me. And then I'm, I'm probably going to have some additional questions next time about the business plan. What's the marketing plan? What's, how much capital is the group going to have, you know, backing them? I think a lot of the deals that we get into are, are with folks who aren't necessarily prepared to do business. I don't think that's the case here, but, you know, folks need to have a business plan and have capital and have the ability to pull off the deal.
Right.
So we're just probably, I'm, you know, going to have some of those kinds of questions, and it, it will be nice to have at least one of the principals at the table as well.
Any further questions, comments? So is there a motion? Diane?
I move that we send ordinance number 2015-07-069, which is an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with blank at 401 North Broadway Avenue to council with no recommendation.
Moved by Diane, second by Charlie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. Number seven?
Same motion applies here. Send ordinance 2015-770, amending the annual budget ordinance, redevelopment agreement with blank LLC, which we could suggest as a name for them, to council with no recommendation.
Second. Moved by Charlie, second by Eric. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. This is, this looks great.
Ordinance number 2015-07-071, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for, wait a minute, did we skip? I skipped, they did not. My fault, y'all. Resolution 2015-07-032R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, JAG program, City of Urbana, City of Champaign, and Champaign County, UPD, Chief Connelly. I like that purple shirt.
Thank you, sir. The information has been provided. The JAG grant is an annual grant that we received last year. If you recall, we managed the grant on our own. Years past, Champaign was the primary handler of that grant, and then we just piggybacked off it. We went back to that version. So our portion of the grant is eleven thousand six hundred is identified in the packet, and if I, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Charlie?
Move to send to council a recommendation for approval.
Second. I don't know. Diane, seconded. Moved by Charlie, second by Diane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.
And the companion?
Number nine. Ordinance number 2015-07-071, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2015-16, a JAG grant.
Move to send this to council with recognition for approval.
A second.
Moved by Charlie, second by Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. All right.
Number ten.
Resolution number 2015-07-033R, a second amendment to resolution authorizing the creation of a task force to recommend how the city can improve understanding of data comply, compi, complied, compiled in the IDOT traffic study and respond to concerns raised by social justice organizations. A resolution to further extend the date for public review and comment and for submission of final report of findings and policy recommendations of IDOT traffic study task force's finds. Peter Resnick, Chair of the Urbana IDOT Traffic Study Task Force.
Good evening. So normally, as many of you probably know, a week before last, we released our preliminary findings. Those are now available on the Urbana website. Normally, at this point, I would probably be presenting those findings, but Alderperson Brown, being out of town, asked that we delay that. So Mr. Batista from the Human Relations Office will be arranging with the mayor. I believe we are aiming for a presentation on August third during that council meeting to present the findings and to get some of your feedback. At this point, all we are asking for is a couple of dates to be set. The resolution as you had it originally had a thirty-day public comment period. Unfortunately, given that we completed at the very end of June, beginning of July, that puts us smack in the middle of summer, and the task force felt that giving the public a little extra time, and particularly the university to get back in session, folks to come back from their vacations, et cetera, would be very useful. So what we're asking for is extending the public comment... So what we're asking for is extending the public comment period until September 30th to allow for more input. Beyond that, the original resolution never gave us a deadline after the public comment period closed as to when to get the report. So we're suggesting that you also put for the end of October a due date on that report. That will give us a couple of additional meetings. The task force will continue to have its monthly meetings for July, August, September, allow public input at those meetings and to the website, all of the information is up there. I would encourage all of you to read through the report or at least the executive summary and the recommendations. The statistical portion of the report, the additional 60-odd pages on top of the 30-odd pages is thick going. We had a really good statistician work on this stuff. But I can say for myself, it was a slog to get through. If you're able to, more power to you. But I'm not going to be available next week, so I figured I would come and answer any questions you had about the extension that we're asking for, for public comment and our final report to get to you.
Diane.
Just a logistical question. I'm on the site now, I see that you can send in public comments by emailing an individual, which is listed there. But I'm seeing three comments.
Those already came in by email.
So anyone who submits a comment, they will be posted and meet up on the website?
That's correct.
With the name attached, so there are no anonymous comments?
Well, we can't as a task force take, I don't think we can take purely anonymous comments for addition to the report. People who do want to come to meetings and just discuss them and not have them in written form on the website, I think that's fine.
But just so people know, whatever they write is going to be posted here.
We're going to post it up there. My current plan for the task force is every meeting, that monthly meeting that we have, we will take the comments we've received already and come up with a disposition, whether it's making edits to the report or just adding them to a public comment section and go through the report that way.
Eric.
Now, I don't believe, I believe however, that we will post any comments we get. So if somebody, if it came from an email address that didn't identify the person's name, but was just a, you know, a name for the account, we would post those. So people can, it's not quite anonymous, but it's sort of semi-anonymous. It would be hard to track them down.
True enough, so if someone wants to post from random Gmail account, we're happy to take those comments and we'll just post them.
Well, the main thing is that they're going up.
But they will be, the comments themselves will be available on the website.
Any other questions? Charlie.
Move to send this to council with recognition for approval.
I'll second. Move by Charlie, second by Dennis, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ordinance number 2015-07-072, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Campus Communications Group, Inc., Public Works.
Good evening. What's before you is just that Campus Communications will be extending their fiber slightly unstowed between Lincoln and Gregory, and this is that license to allow that to occur.
Charlie.
Since this is pretty standard boilerplate, I move to send this to council with recognition for approval.
I'll second. Move by Charlie, second by Dennis, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Ordinance number 2015-07-073, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Metro Communications Company, Inc., Public Works.
In a similar vein, Metro Communications is asking for fiber in their conduit on Lincoln Avenue between University and Melrose Boulevard. One little bit different twist to this is they're being granted permission from Campus Communications to use their conduit, so, which is nice, rather than having two separate conduits in the right-of-way. So, but still Metro has to seek this license in order to occupy a right-of-way. So again, it's on Lincoln Avenue between University and Melrose.
Charlie or Dennis, Charlie?
Go ahead, Charlie, just keep going.
Move to send this to council with the recommendation for approval.
I second. Move by Charlie, second by Dennis, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Ordinance number 2015-07-074, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Colorado Place LLC, Public Works.
Thank you. There's an existing public right-of-way for what could be a mid-block sidewalk that was never installed. There's no future use, excuse me, future plans to install such a sidewalk. Meanwhile, the adjacent property owner at 902 East Harding would like to put a fence as part of a fence security plan around his site. He needs city council decision to occupy this public right-of-way. There would be a fee involved with this, an annual fee, starting at $20 per year. The Exhibit A attached shows the approximate location of where that fence would go at 902 East Harding. And the license language, agreement language is similar to other language we use for permission of such use for such a fence.
Dennis. I got a question for you, actually. So if this is fenced, and it's going to be a perimeter fence around the entire property, and how high will the fence be in the front?
The height of the fence is six feet.
And so this is going to be like a barrier fence? It's a security fence?
It's actually, on the agreement, page one, it talks about the height and the width. The material is metallic, the color is black ornamental. That's about all I can tell you as far as the fence type.
So it's going to be, it's not going to be opaque, it's going to be a see-through fence, but it's going to be like a railing fence? Sounds like, but I just.
I would have to get that information and let you know, I can't answer that.
Okay, I mean, I'm just concerned about, you know, not placing a visual barrier across an entire building on the street side. Do we allow that? I don't think we do, do we?
A opaque fence, visual barrier, I believe, I've seen such fences.
I know we don't allow that in a residential area, but this is a business?
I would have to check with building safety for that.
Okay, well, please do, I think that should be settled before we take a vote next week.
Diane.
Well, this is the property owned by BZ Management, Paul Zeruki. So it is very important that, I agree with Dennis, it needs to be not opaque. We just had a study in that neighborhood that recommended fences be, not opaque wooden fences, but fences you can see through because, just for safety reasons and for the entire perimeter of the property. So I'm fine with the fence, but it just has to be not opaque.
Libby, did you have something to add to this?
I would just say the requirement for opaqueness relates to sight visibility just in the, where it might interfere with the visibility of a vehicle. Otherwise, we do allow privacy fences. And without the fence permit in front of us, we can't tell if that's part of that opaque requirement or if it would be a privacy fence.
Eric.
But this property is an apartment complex, is it not? So I guess I might ask Chief Connolly, you know, in terms of safety, is it really desirable for a building to be visible from the street? For example, if you're, somebody's going by, you can see that somebody's trying to climb into a window or break into a door or something like that. That seems to me to be a reasonable requirement.
Absolutely, Ms. Marlin actually emailed me earlier today, and I was under the impression the fence was similar to that of Hamilton on the Park.
Actually, I'm looking at this, and that is what that means. Black ornamental means very similar to Hamilton on the Park with the black railings and, yeah. So it should preserve that visibility.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, thank you. So I'll make a motion that we send this to council with approval.
Second.
Move by Dennis, second by Diane, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Let's see. Ordinance number 2015-07-075, an ordinance approving, an ordinance extending authorization to Ameren Illinois Company to construct, operate, and maintain a gas utility system in the City of Urbana. 30-year agreement in renewing Ameren Illinois Company franchise concerning gas utility system.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce to the committee representative from Ameren, Mr. Steve Estes is here in case there's any questions that we might have. You can sit here, Steve, that'd be fine. Steve was one of the representatives with Ameren. Mr. Jim Simon and I were the ones that met representing the city. 50 years has passed from the previous franchise agreement for gas system in Urbana, and that happened actually last August. And for the last several months, we've been in negotiation for a new ordinance, which is before you. The ordinance is very similar to the one in the past, except for the four significant items that I listed in the memo, and I'll just go through those quickly. Rather than a 50-year agreement, we're talking about a 30-year agreement with Ameren Illinois. Secondly, of course, Ameren will continue to be the gas utility provider. In the past, it was Illinois Power Company, but it's since been Ameren Illinois Company. Number three, and this is a new item that I think from a community development and a public works perspective is important, and that is, is that we'll have more of a opportunity to interact with planners with Ameren with respect to new gas facilities that may be occurring, particularly within existing or future road right-of-ways. And the key with this is whether it's above or below ground facilities, it's important to try to get them located in as good a location as possible that won't interfere with future roadway or development plans. So that can avoid cost on either end of, whether it's the utility, the developer, or the city. So I think this can be nothing but helpful for future developments, particularly in our mile and a half. And then lastly, in the past, the 50-year past, previous agreement had provided free, if you will, therms to the city. Therms is that measurement of unit of gas usage. And those therms apply to city buildings, such as this building or the library, fire station, et cetera. Ameren wants to change that process of recognizing a value for this agreement with the city from a therm to cash. So this probably, we had the most discussion and debate on, but I'll tell you that we're, staff at least, is satisfied with this number. It was a lower number and a descending number in the past, and, you know, just leave it at that. But this dollar amount is a very comfortable number that in most winters would pay for the therm or gas usage of the city facilities. And there's also the ability to adjust this number if the city would continue to grow at 1% or 2% a year, or whatever the case may be. Conversely, if the city declines, that number might fluctuate in a negative direction. But historically, we've not done that. So, so those are the main differences. Otherwise, the Ameren can operate within their public rights-of-way, and they would follow the rights-of-way standards and details and permitting just like any other utility company does. And Ameren has a good track record with the city with respect to how they do operate within our public rights-of-way. So it's staff, Jim Simon, and my recommendation that we would recommend approval. And then a second component to this action tonight is this would be, if approved, would be new revenue to the city. So we would have a budget amendment ordinance accepting that $86,000 and then a corresponding up to expense in the gas, in the utility line item in our budget, so.
Charlie.
I guess what I'm concerned about is inflation over 30 years and what that, and how that will impact the $86,000 that's in here, because there's no inflation clause.
Well, that's something that we did research, and this is information that we received from the Illinois Commerce Commission. And first of all, to my knowledge, Ameren doesn't have this CPI inflation clause in other communities like Decatur, for example. So if we're going to add an inflation factor into the agreement, then that's going to be passed on to the ratepayers. And if that's what we'd like to see done, that's essentially what would happen.
Yeah, but.
To Urbana ratepayers.
Yeah, so over a 30-year period, you can, you know, given this number, we'll be making a profit at the beginning and losing money on the other end with respect to gas costs. Where that line of, you know, where the, where that intersects or where that flips from one to the other, I have no idea because I can't guess what inflation will be over a 30-year period. You could look at the past 30 years and predict it based on that or something like that if you wanted to. And if you do that, what does, how does that, how does that impact our, how does that impact this number and, or do we just stop using gas at some point? When we can't afford to pay for it anymore?
What I do know, and Steve can clarify, you know, any rate increase obviously is an only Commerce Commission determination. It's not necessarily a CPI increase, but I don't know, do you know?
These are standardized agreements. All renewed franchise agreements throughout the state are in this format. So we no longer give the free therms or free kilowatt-hours on our agreements. It's based on the customer count, and there's other certain factors based on the type of city and, you know, that type of thing. But, you know, these, this is what we have, we can, like in this case here, it was increased a certain percentage because it was a longer term. It can be reduced by the same percentage if we want to reduce the term. You know, if you, 10-year term, it's 10% less. In this case here, are offering 10% more because it's a 30-year agreement versus a standard 20. So we have to treat all communities, you know, consistently.
Well, I mean, it does provide an incentive for the city to conserve gas, I mean, so from that perspective, it's a good thing.
I think just to further state what Steve is saying is, is that we felt for a higher annual amount, $86,000, to go from a 20-year term to a 30-year term was worth it versus having a much lower number for a 20-year or even a further lower number if it was only a 10-year agreement. So that was kind of that balance or that, you know, determination we thought would be best for the city long-term. But if we want to go to a shorter term, then it's going to be far less than the $86,000. And so we felt we would like to go with a higher number initially. And I think, just to support, we have been doing many things to reduce our therm usage, actually, in this and other buildings too. And there's certainly more things we can do. So that's something else that's going for us, that we've done some things to help reduce, you know, the gas therm usage in buildings through efficiencies.
So I've just been looking up history of natural gas prices, and they just wander all over the place. It isn't clear that they'll go up or down, but 15 years ago, they were the same as they are now, roughly. But in the intervening period, they went up by a factor of five and then came back down. And obviously, this has to do with, you know, discovering new resources, you know, sources with fracking. So I think the, so the market. So I think the, so the market is just incredibly volatile. But it's not, I, it doesn't make any sense, actually, looking at these tremendous fluctuations, to try to put an inflation adjuster on it. It's not like other things.
Dennis.
So how does this, being a recipient of Cub Voice, which is a citizen advocacy program and newsletter for constituents who are interested in their rates, how does, how will rate changes and rate increases which may occur, and Ameren may request of the state, affect our, this figure? If the rates go up for gas in the future, maybe this is not based on just rate inflation, but it may be based on requests that Ameren makes for higher gas rates in the future, which is not an uncommon practice, I understand, in the state of Illinois. How does this relate then to our fixed fee?
Well, it's, I mean, it's straight compensation. So whatever that increase is, is, you know, you know, if we have a rate filing next year, and the delivery charge, which is what, you know, that's what our income is, the PGA, which is what fluctuates so much, that's passed through dollar-for-dollar. The, our rates shouldn't, I mean, it won't affect this agreement at all other than the fact that, you know, you may be paying more for gas at these community facilities, you know, than you are right now.
And I guess that's what I'm saying, is that there are going to be gas rates in the future. And I think that Ameren's famous for asking for one almost every year. So I'm just saying that that's also a factor in this agreement.
Mr. Mattigan.
So I mean, really, I don't really know what the big deal is here. Whether you count it in dollars or in therms, the city gets a credit. Ameren wants to shift that, shift it from usage to dollars. But the bottom line is, somebody is paying for that gas. So either the city's paying for it, or the ratepayers are paying for it. So, I mean, I don't see the big deal here. You know, the city, the city is still going to get, you know, a significant amount of subsidy that the ratepayers don't directly have to pay. But everything that's not covered by the city is covered by the ratepayers. Because Ameren's not, they're purchasing the gas, and they have to be paid for the gas.
Eric.
So I think the only issue is who is subject to volatility. Whereas previously, it was Ameren who was subject to price volatility, and now the city will be subject to the volatility. But beyond that, it, I agree with you, I don't think that's a big deal.
So when we had the free therms, basically, for the fifty years, there was no cost to the city, correct?
Some years, we did exceed those therms. So some years, we, I think in more recent times, or the last ten years, we may have spent, paid ten or twelve thousand dollars in addition.
So over the life of this thirty-year agreement, even with inflation, are we going to average out at about the same ten or twelve thousand dollars that we may have to pay over? Or is it going to be even more than that?
It wasn't an average, it was a one-time expense.
It was a one-time?
Many, many years, we were well under the allocation of the therms. But it wasn't like we received cash for that, we were just under the therms. What we're saying is, sure, we may be over the eighty-six thousand, whether it's a very, very cold winter, or through an Illinois Commerce Commission-approved increase, you know, we may fluctuate either side at eighty-six thousand dollars. What we believe is, generally speaking, hopefully, all things being equal, we're going to be, you know, at that amount.
Break even, basically?
In bad years, correct. But that's, that's hard to know.
So on this front end of the agreement, it looks as though the city will have a, you get the influx of the eighty-six thousand, but how much of that are we going to, so we averaging about seven thousand dollars in power every month, or something like that? I mean, I don't know how this is a actual plus for the city.
You know, I don't, I think what has been historically given to the city was essentially close to a no-cost for gas use. Okay, some years, we had to pay for that gas use, cold winters, okay. All right. This is trying to preserve that concept. Although it's not free therms anymore, it's cash to the city for the use of our right-of-ways, Ameren's paying, which we will potentially be made whole, but there may be cold winters where we may spend more than eighty-six thousand in revenue we receive. I can't, we can't forecast what's going to happen in future rate increases.
Yeah, we went through this discussion, and we could dream up all kinds of ways of doing this, but we really don't have all kinds of choices here. And it was going to boil down to, if we want more money for the city, it's going to cost the ratepayers more. So we're trying to maximize what we do within a very narrow range here. And I think it's better to go with thirty years than with twenty or ten. So that was what the discussion boiled down to.
Diane.
Just had a question about population increases in the, it, the agreement states that if after five years from the date of passage, the population has increased by three percent, then you can request revision in the date, number. Is it a one-time deal, or anytime your population increases by a certain percentage? I'm thinking optimistically here, just.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if it's every five years. But yeah, after five years, if the population increases, you let us know. We'll recalculate the number. But that is not a one-time thing. I'm not sure if it's every five years, or, you know, every year after, you know, until you hit another one percent after five years, you know what I mean? I don't recall what the agreement says right offhand, but it is not a one-time.
It's not a one-time thing.
So I'm just trying to make sure I have complete understanding here, because it sounds to me as if we have negotiated against ourselves here, and I'm a little concerned about that. So we used to break even, but now it's going to cost us money.
No, we didn't break even.
I know, you said it on maybe ten to twelve thousand dollars, but that's over a, that's in a fifty-year span? Every now and then, we had, we had to go over ten to twelve thousand dollars in a year? Right, okay.
There was, right. Keep in mind that, again, we're going to receive eighty-six thousand dollars. And let's say the next three years, we spend seventy-eight. So there's, you know, seven thousand dollars times three, twenty thousand dollars we can put, you know, away for that rainy day, we'll call it a cold winter day. If we have subsequently a real cold winter, and our expenses are ninety-four hundred thousand dollars, we have twenty thousand dollars, in theory, we can help pay for that winter. So we didn't have that in the past. If we were under in therms, if we used a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand therms, we didn't have a twenty thousand in therm credit to next year. With cash, you do. So I.
And I'm sure we're going to escrow that money, right, Mayor? Okay. All right, thank you.
Diane.
Well, I move that we send ordinance number 2015-07-075 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Move by Diane, second by Eric. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes have it, thank you. Ordinance number 2015-07-076, and ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015, 2016 annual budget, Ameren franchise agreement.
Charlie.
I knew you would.
I didn't even have my hand raised, but I'll do it anyway. Move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2015-07-077, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three Forty-three, increasing number of Class G-two liquor licenses for premier entertainment of Illinois DBA Flamingo Slots, Seventeen Twenty Philo Road, Suite B. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I need to recuse myself.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Yes, you can thank.
Oh, and good night.
Good night.
Okay, this is to add to the G-two licenses. It would change it from four to five. And this company meets all the standards that we set up, which are, you know, essentially limiting the number of G-two licenses we can have in the city of Urbana. So we've checked them out, and we think they meet all our standards. So I would recommend approval.
Dennis.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, I, what I will say, okay, I'm not real excited about these gaming halls, but, okay, I've watched that the fact that they seem to be pretty quiet locations. I mean, there, I haven't, there hasn't been a rumble on one yet. This is at a location that has been empty for, I don't know, several years. I don't know, five years or more. Originally built as a tiny shopping area as a part of a development for residential, high-density residential. It's still in a shopping mall that's, you know, about half-empty anyways. So I guess, I guess this is the best use that we can find for that location at this time. So I guess I'm going to recommend that we approve it and send it to council with that recommendation.
Second.
So we do have a motion and a second, but we do have, I'm sorry, I should have, maybe should have called this first, some public input on this issue. Way, you want to come on up?
Hi, my name is Wei Zhe. I'm the owner for the Hot Spa Restaurant LLC, located in eighteen oh nine South Vital Row. It's a gaming hall, which is about only one block away from the Flamingo Slot. That's supposed to be proposed at Seventeen Twenty Vital Row, Suite B. I did make a phone call to the mayor's office about a year ago, around this time, by possibly put a second gaming hall on the Vital Row, and the location is exactly the same location that I proposed a year ago. Then at the time, I would be advised that office is not willing to put another one on the Vital Row because of high crime and issue that we had experienced over there. Then the, I got discouraged from that. Then I move on, and I think the city made a right call. I mean, we tried to make the city a better community. And during the times, I worked, I'm the manager there too, so I worked about fifty hours there. During the time I worked there, there's a lot of random people coming, asking for spare money, et cetera. And I was there to help it up. And the, and during the past six months, there's a bank called Holland Bank been robbed two times on the same corner of the Vital Row, was eighteen twelve, South Vital. One time on December eighteen, the second time on February thirteen. I don't think the crimes have been reduced since the time I asked. And I don't see the reason why that we go through this meeting while I got turned down a year ago. I was hope everyone here would consider it, maybe do something about it.
Thank you, appreciate your input. Questions?
Eric?
I guess I do have a question. Are you asking us for a specific action? You think, you think this should not be approved because of, because in your opinion, it's a, it's too high crime in area for the.
That's what I've been told about a year ago, that they, you guys, you guys not wanting to put another one there because there's crime there. And the, from what I see so far, I think I've made the right move, not putting another one there, till just now, that the crime's not better. I have constant people walking inside my store, asking for spare money. Then people outside pick out a secret bid, spoke out of that. Then the, I think the bank got robbed two times in six months. That means something, right here. And I have a, my store is facing the county market, which is twenty-four-seven grocery shop. We help a little bit with all the flow, walking back and forth. Because all the gaming, they open till one, two AM at night. A lot of time, I become a self, I, we usually were there to close the door because I don't, I don't want anything to happen there.
So, okay, the, I guess really, the question for us is whether, well, I don't want to engage you in debate, but maybe I would ask Chief Connolly if you wanted to, if you wanted to comment on this point. Do you think that there's anything in the activity in the area that would be made worse, or would mitigate against us approving this license? Mayor, Mayor Preston.
Well, I think that we have a competitor saying he doesn't want another business there. I don't remember any discussion of turning you down for anything a year ago. I mean, I could talk to the staff about it, but I certainly do not remember that. And I think that we've really cleaned up Philo Road in terms of crime. So, you know, I don't know what, when you're saying what happened a year ago, I have no recollection of that.
I spoke with a lady called Joanda, Jo-Linda. That's the person I've been contacting.
Well, I'll talk to Jo-Linda, but I do think you have kind of a conflict of interest here, too.
That's what you're saying, yep.
So, thank you for coming to bring the concerns. I am, you're bringing something to my attention that I was not aware of. Certainly, I'm, when we talk about crime in the area, if indeed there's some report or some history that you were denied an opportunity to open a business there based upon, based upon crime, then we should be able to show that there's some significant reduction in the crime in that area. I understand that we're trying to generate revenue for the city, but I don't see how we're going to tell one person in the exact same location that you can't have a business there based upon crime, and then open this, a business, the exact same business in the exact same spot, if we cannot prove that there's been a reduction of crime in that area. So I'm a little concerned about that. So I would want us to see that. I would want us to see some level of understanding or report or something to that, to that extent, before I felt comfortable telling you no, and then telling someone else yes.
Great, thank you.
So maybe what I would do is make a, change my motion and not make a recommendation of approval, but just make a, just send it to council with no recommendation. Do you think that that week would then?
Yeah, we could get you the information to clarify this issue.
I think you better come forward and speak at the microphone, if you're going to do public input.
My name's Brian Han, and I'm a broker for Green Street Realty, and we happen to own that building also. And I have never, to my knowledge, received any, you know, he's never come forth to me in the time that I've been there. And I'd be more than happy to look into seeing if he has ever contacted, you know, the owners, the ownership of that building to do that same thing there. We've really only had the cell phone business in there, and then Labor Ready is the only two businesses that have ever. We really just started marketing this thing about four months ago. So we bought it out of foreclosure, it's a distressed property, and we've had, you know, a lot of calls for new people in there. And we do also have another facility that's rented out, the space on the very north end of the building. So the redevelopment is doing well there. Actually, we've doubled the amount of tenants there in the last four months. But we've surely not turned anybody away. And, you know, I think it's obvious that we make the effort to come and sit through this meeting to try and, you know, help the tenant that is here that wants to pursue this venture. And we would have done the same for anyone else that came forward in the past. And I don't think that's been the case, so.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm ready to move this to council with recommendation for approval. I, which is the motion that's on the floor.
It is, I was going to. It is, I was going to change it to no recommendation, until we find out some more information.
Well, you've got a second, or so, do you remember, do you remember who that was?
That was, that was I.
Yeah, what do you think?
Do you want to change that to no recommendation, just?
No, I think, I think we have enough information.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm ready to move this with approval. I think that, yeah, yeah, so I...
So, the motion that we have on the floor now is the same, or has it been amended? What do we have?
It's the same.
Same.
Which was for approval?
Right.
So...
So, I'll make a motion that we amend it, and do it for no approval.
We just forward it without any recommendation.
Is there a second? Can I second?
No.
Can I give the chair to Charlie and Dennis?
No. Well, I don't know.
I'm confused with that. Was it approved once, and now we're unapproving it?
It hasn't been voted upon, so there's nothing that's happened yet.
Okay.
All right, so there's no second to, to Dennis's motion?
Right.
All right, so...
So, you keep your first motion.
I'm calling a question.
On what? What is the motion?
To approve it, rather than revise it. Yeah, that's the motion.
Oh, I thought that's what we just had on the floor, but anyway, okay.
He wanted to amend it, I think.
Okay, so, now back to the original. So, the original motion is on the floor, that's proposed by Dennis, second by Diane, to move it forward to council with recommendation for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
So, three to two.
So...
Three to two.
Sure, those in favor? All right, so, three to two, that motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, you're in good shape.
All right. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.
So, our minds are confused, but our hearts are in the right place.